... evaluating and initiating actions on matters relating to the arts and humanities, and encouraging programs, the developmental programs that promote progress in the arts and humanities, end of quote. I take this to mean that we are the subject matter experts in arts and culture for the District of Columbia government, and as such, we will respond appropriately to any and all legislation or directives that fall in our purview. Moving on to our public comment portion, have a number of individuals signed up for public comment this evening. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. Note that all comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be entering into dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up with your email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. Mr. George Jackson, D.C. Black Chamber of Commerce, are you with us? Mr. George Koch, Automatic Inc. I think you're muted, we can't hear you.
Okay, now, now I hear.
Yes.
Thank you, very much, Chairman. I just wanted to share two items with the commission. One, during the late seventies and early eighties, D.C. had a very successful CETA and the arts program. It was jointly sponsored by the D.C. Commission and by the Labor Agency, the nonprofit arm of the Central Labor Council. There's an organization in New York now called City Lore, and they have a national humanities grant to begin the process of collecting information on CETA programs. We've already been involved in five oral histories with the D.C. humanities, and we'll be working with these folks, and just wanted to let everyone know. The second is that Automatic is searching for a building for 2023. We are working with the Golden Triangle bid, the downtown bid, and the Georgetown bid, and we hope to be able to have that in place, obviously, before the end of the year. So I just wanted to share those two items with the commission. Thank you.
Very much. Devin Walker?
Good evening, Chairperson and the commission. It's an honor and a pleasure to be back with you again. I am Devin Walker, Ward Four resident and artist, and recipients of grants as well. Today, I just wanted to share with you all, well, really even ask, some information related to artists. I know that, and I'm glad to hear that the commission is the subject area, subject matter experts when it comes to arts and culture, and I'm curious to talk a little bit more about professional development training for artists. And not necessarily just for how we can get grants, or how we can, you know, do classroom management, but on how we can become, and things that we need to do to become business owners, because whether we like it or not, unless you're an employer, you are a business, and we are a business. And back in November, the D.C. has expanded its anti-discrimination protections to include independent contractors. They passed an amendment that basically said that, well, previously, we, independent artists or independent contractors were not covered underneath the District of Columbia and federal anti-discrimination laws, but now, independent contractors who experience discrimination on the job, whether it be sexual harassment, lack of reasonable accommodation, or retaliation for protesting discrimination, are provided a private right of action, and we can all, we can go to the D.C. Office of Human Rights, or in court, just like any other employee. Prior to becoming a full-time artist, for 25 years, I served as the Equal Employment Opportunity Investigator for the federal government for seven years, but for Metro, D.C. Metro for 19 years. I was a senior EEO officer. And so I've been doing a lot of one-on-one training with artists, letting them know of their rights and responsibilities, but I was curious to know whether the commission offers any type of professional development to help artists know about things like this, or even just setting up a business, or reviewing and understanding what should and should not be in a contract, or even knowing the difference between an independent contractor and versus an employer, to avoid misclassification issues, which happens all the time. And so my question that I'll leave with you is, does the commission offer these types of training? And I would love to work with you in any capacity to help set up these types of trainings for artists, so that we can really grow from just waiting for organizations to reach us, to being independent and truly thriving in our business. Thank you for this time, and I look forward to hearing back from you all in one capacity or another. Thank you.
The good news is, we do have a program called Business of the Arts, and there's training and sessions we have on that. And I'll let David talk a little bit more about it, but we will get in contact with you, because we also want to constantly further develop that program, and perhaps you could be helpful to us in further development. David?
To you, Uncle Devin. We would be happy to have a conversation with you, where, as Reggie mentioned, we have Business of the Arts, and we're always looking to help meet the needs and build the capacity of our community. So I'll circle back to you during the week.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
By commentary, we have recognized for a while that while people need money, people need fish, people also need to be taught to catch fish, and so we've tried to use our resources, not only provide people money, but provide them the resources for capacity building around Business of the Arts, around all sorts of things that make for the full sort of ecosystem of the arts in D.C. So thank you for bringing that to our attention again. Good news is, we have something like that, but as David said, we can work with you to further advance it. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Christopher Smythe Macaulay with Art of Living.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me today. I'm excited to be here. My name is Christopher Smythe Macaulay. I'm from the Art of Living Foundation. We're an international nonprofit based in over 180 countries, with our headquarters here in Washington, D.C. We are presenting the Fourth World Culture Festival, and first in the United States of America, right here in D.C. on the Mall, and I look forward to sharing a little bit about that with you, and we can show a short video that speaks louder than I can, so if we can play the video, please.
Every crisis is an opportunity to send the message to the world. We can celebrate our differences, to live life to its fullest, to unite people of different cultures, races, nationalities, and religions, to uplift human life. What makes World Culture Fest so exciting? Beyond the dancing, the singing, the connection, it begins with a vision. Inspired by Guru Dev Sri Sri Ravi Shankar, a spiritual teacher and voice of harmony, it's a vision of the world coming together as one family.
It is time, the wall should come down between cultures, between civilizations. We all must realize we are one world family.
And it's about the experience.
I'm so happy to be here.
I want the world to share and have the joy what we are having.
Here, the most peaceful place in the world.
Look at New Delhi tonight, 3.5 million people, and no violence.
It's inspiration, it's diversity on an Olympic scale, it's inclusivity, and pure celebration. Now, the World Culture Festival is premiering in the United States. This is your opportunity to be part of history. On September 29, 2023, the World Culture Fest is premiering at the National Mall in
Thank you. It's quite exciting every time I see that. I'm a Ward Four resident, and I'm very excited that this is happening in our city just down the street. So far, we have over 160,000 registrations, so registered quickly, it's a free event, the mall is filling up pretty quickly. And we have some really, we're really honored to have some really good people on our team. Our reception committee includes Ban Ki Moon, Ban Ki Moon, the Eighth Secretary General of the United Nations. We have over 15 current and sitting and former heads of state, as well as 26 Republican and Democrat members of Congress. It is truly a bipartisan show of unity and diversity across the board. And locally, on our organizing committee, we have David Rubenstein, Chair of the Kennedy Center for Performing Arts, our own Reggie Van Lee, and Vida Ali of Ben's Chili Bowl, just to name a few, and they're helping bring this together and making sure that we're able to share this with the world, with Washington, and welcoming the world to Washington. And this is a truly great opportunity. It's an exciting time, it's a historic moment, it is the fourth one we're doing, and as the Art of Living presents this, and in, first one in the United States, and truly an opportunity of creativity and artistry on the Mall, and we look forward to partnering with the arts and humanities on ways that we can showcase to the world the diversity and beauty of Washington, D.C., and all the artistry that's local to us, and sharing with that with everyone. I know we're limited on time, but whatever questions anyone has, we would love to take those or discuss a little later, but we look forward to partnering with you on this.
I did, and as a member of the organizing committee, I'm deeply engaged in this. The commission has already had a meeting or two, and so we're figuring out how we can best connect with the program. And for those who didn't check the calendars, this is the exact same weekend as Art All Night. So we're trying to coordinate in the right sort of way between our participation in Art All Night and our participation in the World Culture Festival, but we're excited about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Anise Forman with us, the Ace Collection?
I am here. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you all. That was a beautiful video. I am going to try to split my time to make both of these events as well. I am here to represent an artist named Dudie Charmont. I myself is a gallerist, so I sell art, and I also have a gallery in Northwest D.C. So Dudie Charmont recently filed an application for the Public Art Building Communities, and the application was submitted, but we did get feedback from the historic person, Andrew Lewis, that there were some, just questions on actually painting the mural on the brick building. Now, I did have a question for the committee, if possible, because we're back and forth with communications right now. When he does approve, because we are going to try to take the panel route, if he does approve it, is it okay if we're able to submit another letter from Andrew Lewis, letting everybody know that he's going to approve it? I wanted to show the panel while I'm here, if I'm allowed to, the actual mural on the wall. Oops, let's see if I can. And, oh, I don't know if I'm allowed to. Well, I don't think you'll allow me to, but I did receive an email earlier, and the person that was emailing, I think his name was Roy, he was amazing, I sent it to Roy, and he actually has the mural, how it's going to look in Columbia Heights. And so follow up that video, the mural is called Le Grand Familia, and it starts with the grandmother, and she is just having a particular, each culture that comes from this one grandmother, and it shows that, and actually, the mural that's going to be presented in Columbia Heights, because we're here to represent everyone in that area. That is it for me. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and have a wonderful evening.
Great, great, thank you very much. Has Mr. George Jackson joined us, from the D.C. Black Chamber of Commerce? If not, we'll move on to the director's report. So Aaron Myers sends his regrets, he's a little under the weather today, so he wouldn't, he can't join us, but he has prepared his director's report, and David Mark is prepared to read it for us.
It's Reggie. Welcome once again, everyone, and a very special welcome to our onboarding commissioners, Julianne Brienza, Cicely Habimana, and Chase Maggiano. And also a warm welcome back to returning commissioners for an additional term, Hector Torres and Carla Sims. The staff, Aaron and the staff are very much looking forward to working with you in service to our constituents. We have an update from the Communications Marketing Department. Our Public Affairs Specialist, J.R. Russ, has reached out to communication staff at grantee organizations this past January to build relationships and to better support sharing news about CAH-funded programs. And enough respondents expressed interest in a communications working group, which kicked off with an exploratory conversation in April with a list of 50 grantee organizations. The goals were to position CAH as a resource for professional development and support regarding communications, as well as to provide a space for peer learning. Since April, there have been two meetings, which have covered communications theory, measuring impact, social media statistics, search engine optimization basics, and using analytics tools across several platforms. Meetings of the working group will continue monthly for the remainder of a fiscal year. We are also in the process of onboarding new staff. We have selected three individuals for roles. We have two new events coordinators, one who's scheduled to begin on July 31, and the second scheduled to begin on August 14. August 14 will be a busy day. We also have a new special assistant starting that day, and our curator is also scheduled to start with us on that date. Interviews are currently in progress for the Community Outreach Specialist, and in the next couple of days, we'll be interviewing for the Arts Grants Coordinator in the Public Art Department. Our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Officer Position Description has been drafted, and is with the D.C. HR Classifications Team for review and approval. And once approved, we will be able to post the opportunity and accept applications. Because of all of these new people joining us, I think the appropriate term is we are busting at the seams, and so we are looking at acquiring an additional suite in this building. Some of you may be familiar with the suite that used to be occupied, used to be the Office of Film way back, before it became part of the Office of Cable Television, Film, Music, and Entertainment. As I said, it's in this building, it's on the same floor, and we are currently working with the Department of General Services to hopefully acquire the space. If we are successful in doing so, we would probably move the largest of our departments, Grants Department, to that space. One of the positives to the space is that it's at the entrance to the building, and so it will hopefully allow for greater and easier access to our grantees and applicants, so they can interface with staff. Aaron wanted to give a special shout out to the Finance Department. In the past several years, four fiscal years to be exact, we have issued over 1,000 distinct grant awards. Last year, you may remember, there were 1,400 distinct grant awards that we awarded. To the best of our knowledge, there is no other grant-making agency in the District of Columbia government that comes close to that volume. Issuing over 1,000 awards means that over 1,000 separate purchase orders have to be created, and once created, grantee invoices have to be processed against those purchase orders in order to disburse the funds to their intended recipients. Our Finance Department manages the entire purchase order invoicing payment process for the grants, while at the same time managing requisition and payment requests from the rest of the agency as well. What we might sometimes lose sight of is that CAH's Finance Department has been just three individuals, the Resource Allocation Officer, Brian Ayende, Program Analyst, Kia King, and Resource Allocation Analyst, Melissa Leonard. And now, for the time being at least, we will have a Finance Department of two, as Kia is leaving the agency to pursue an exciting new opportunity that we know she will be great at. The critical work of the Finance Department cannot be overstated, because if our grantees do not receive their funding, if the money isn't in their accounts, then we have failed in our mission. We are deeply appreciative and grateful for the countless hours of hard work from Kia, Art All Night 2023 is upon us. CAH has finalized and executed the Art All Night 2023 memorandum of understanding with the Department of Small and Local Business Development. Per the terms of the MOU, CAH has advanced $250,000 to DSLBD to support the 2023 Art All Night Festival. Previously, commissioners expressed an interest in CAH having a more visible role at the festival itself, reflective of the agency as the major funder for Art All Night. However, as outlined below, CAH is no longer the major funder as of the 2022 festival. And just to briefly, for those of you who cannot see the chart, in 2019, CAH contributed $185,000 to the festival. In 2021, that amount grew to $200,000, and last year, it was $285,000. DSLBD itself is now the major funder of the event. In light of this, along with the reality that this is a government event with its top-line branding as, quote, "Mayor Bowser Presents," any additional prominence for CAH at the festival is unlikely. Reggie referenced the Budget Support Act legislation and a new grant program that we'll discuss shortly. The requirement of the legislation is that created this new grant program is that the commission issue rules to set forth the eligibility and dispersment requirements for the grant, and we will look at some of the proposed rules tonight. It has been Aaron's goal as an artist and an advocate to be as fair and equitable as possible, and he intends to continue to be as fair and equitable as possible as the Executive Director for the Commission. And so he wants our constituents to be fully aware of what is in the law and the process that we are required to undertake here. As we've studied this issue, we've received feedback from grantees on parts of the law that seem positive, and parts that could benefit from an adjustment. It is our intention to search, to share that research with the council alongside our proposed rules for the grant. Our goal ultimately is to provide solutions that are in the best service of the district's arts and cultural sector, both at the organizational level and the individual one as well. And then finally, a note for our commissioners, the Board of Ethics is hosting an ethics training on Wednesday morning. If you're around at 11:00 a.m., it's a 45-minute training, and we're happy, Jeff, you mentioned that you would forward the link to the commissioners, it's always great to have a refresher. And that is the end of the director's report. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? If not, we'll move on to the finance report. It's my understanding that Kimber is not here, so Brian, you're going to be presenting the Finance Committee report.
You all hear me? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Ayende. I am the Resource Allocation Officer. I'm appearing to you tonight in a brown suit and blue and brown shirt. I'm going to go straight to the budget, so if we could just go to the page that gives the budget balances, please. Okay. And so with approximately two months left in the fiscal year, we have approximately $5 million still left in the budget, and that's available. A portion of that funding, we're looking to explore the opportunity of an enhancement package, and that package should be, well, further details on it should be coming out shortly, but at the present time, there is a proposal on the table in terms of how the funding will be dispersed. I'll stop there to address any questions anyone might have regarding the budget.
Are we intending, perhaps at the August meeting, to determine how the $5 million, when do we think we will bring to the commission the recommendation of how that $5 million will be dispersed?
It is my understanding that we're looking to have the funding in the appropriate pot. There was, there's four cohorts in the grants budget, that being facilities and buildings, Humanities D.C., Neighborhood Arts, and last but not least, the general operating support. It is the recommendation that those awards go out, or if there is enhancement package, for that funding to come out of the general operating and humanities pots. So the task beforehand would be to ensure that the funding appropriate to that, whatever the recommendations coming from the Grants Committee, would be in its proper place for dispersment.
When might this come to the commission for voting? Do you think in the August meeting or September meeting? Perhaps you don't know.
It should come before the August meeting, if we're looking to disperse the funding timely for the, before the September closing.
So the August meeting, we'll be able to?
Or soon. You did allude to a special meeting.
Central meeting, perhaps.
So perhaps that could happen at the end of that time as well.
Good. Other questions or comments? I mean, nothing has changed really since the last time we had on the finances, but questions, comments? If not, we are joined tonight by Daniel Taylor, the Mayor's Office of Talent and Appointments, who will administer the oath of office for our new commissioners and our returning commissioners. Mr. Taylor, welcome. I need to push the button.
Hello, thank you for having me. So I do have the oaths, but it's just for the new commissioners, not the returning ones.
That's for the new ones?
Yeah.
We don't do it for the returning ones?
No, because they've already been sworn in before, so yeah.
We weren't sure.
Okay, yeah.
They were prepared.
Okay. Well, that is good. So we will be swearing in Cicely Habimana, Julianne Brienza, and Chase Maggiano. Correct?
Mr. Taylor. Thank you. Congratulations and welcome to our new and returning members. And now that you're all official, we'll proceed with you as fully participating commissioners. Just in time for the event of the meeting, the grant discussion. So thank you. But also, we were praising the finance team on the great work they did and crying a little over departing Kia King. And we wanted to make sure that we recognize Ms. King here. If you could just stand and let us applaud you again. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Try not to forget the little people you knew along the way. No, but thank you. We really appreciate it. So I think, chance to finish signing things, and then we'll go on to the Grants Committee. Just give me a minute, Gretchen. We have a great chat. So Gretchen, Grants Committee? You have to, did you push the button?
Hey, Reggie. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'm Gretchen Wharton. I'm a black female with black glasses, and my hair is kind of white today.
Gretchen, let me know if you're familiar. For our new commissioners, they don't realize, but the benefit of our visually impaired constituents, many of us when we first speak, we recognize who we are and describe ourselves. So that's, you wonder why they said that, right? That's, that's what we try to do. Sorry, Gretchen.
No problem. Before we get to Kevin, who's really going to go over the details of the program, I want to give you a little bit of background in terms of why we are doing this and why we are dealing with the legislation as we are and the proposed changes that we have. Many of you have not, probably not been following the commission for the last seven, eight years or so. But back then, I guess it was 2017 or 18 or 19, we were actually given direction to award certain grantees by name, specific amounts of money. That went on for a number of years. After that, we said, this is really unfair. Then, of course, there was the era of DEI. Thankfully, that became a very public and national and worldwide effort. And when that happened, we said, we really need to do something here. We've got enough people that understand what we've been dealing with, that understand that we really need to focus on different ways of doing things so that we can assure that everybody gets an equal opportunity and so that we do it fairly and not be so directed to give specific organizations specific amounts of money for each grant process. This kind of money came right off the top of our budget. Hands down, we were directed to do that. We then, of course, formed a task force, and that's when Reggie came in. And Cora was one of the people who spearheaded the task force, and we give our thanks to the both of them for coming in and just looking at where we were, what we had, and what we needed to do, and the kinds of changes we needed to make so that we can make sure that so many of the grantees or potential grantees had an equal opportunity to fairly be judged and fairly be panelled so that they became awardees. Things have changed again, as they always do. And now we have a situation where we have actually been given direction again. They were kind of going backwards a little bit. And that direction says that we have to give certain, not by name, but certain descriptions of grantees, specific amounts of money, and this is how they have to be judged. And for the very first time, we are actually, have actually been asked to present for approval what we think is the best thing to do. We were given a set of direction. But being the people that we are and being the people that we have been and looking at the entire city and looking at the neighborhoods and the disadvantaged people for so many years and the people that we're dealing with day to day on this, we said, we can't do it that way. Now, we really want you each to pay careful attention as Kevin walks us through the direction we've been given, the suggested rule, and then our changes to the legislation that we're going to propose as a commission. We're not going to vote on this today because it's a lot to think about and read about, and I want each and every one of you to take the time over the next week or so. Call us if you have any questions. We'll be glad to talk to you about it. And then we will call another meeting so that the commission can take a specific vote on it. Kevin, who's done a fantastic job, and Terrell, thank you so much.
Jen, I appreciate it. So I believe everybody has a sheet in front of them. I don't know if it is available for the public. It's coming up on the screen right there. So as guidance through this sheet, I also would provide a little bit of preface. First of all, hello, my name is Kevin Hasser. I'm part of the Grants Department here. It's a privilege to work on behalf of the organizations that helped make DC so vibrant. My background is primarily in our capital projects program, facilities and buildings, but obviously, we're talking about large capital projects today. A few weeks ago, we were presented with a Budget Support Act that the council had approved. The language created the Large Capital Projects Grant for CAH to award roughly $5 million in support of building renovations and other capital improvements. The legislation provides specific qualifiers on how to award those funds, but in in our ultimate application guidelines, I wanted to make sure that we remain inclusive to all potential projects and launch a grant program based on the community's feedback. So I independently started scheduling 30-minute conversations with grantees and other interested parties to try to source this feedback, and as of this moment, I've had 32 of those conversations. There are many more yet to come. A lot of people are very interested in expressing this feedback. Just to give an idea of some of these organizations, I've engaged at least one organization from every ward. They represent annual organizational budget sizes of below $200,000 annually, up to in excess of $17 million. They represent landowners, aspiring landowners, both new and established renters, and they operate across the arts and humanities sector in museums, in performance spaces, in galleries, in arts education, and more. The conversations have been enlightening, and I am grateful to anyone listening for your candor shared thus far. To be clear, this is a sample size. We have 55 current facilities and buildings grantees. There are 160 grantees receiving general operating support. And again, many more people interested in participating in the conversations. But based on these initial conversations, I'd like to provide a couple of overall takeaways, after which you can more concretely explore the feedback for each specific point. First of all, the people who engage in conversations are universally grateful for being included in this feedback. Secondly, one of the things that was notable is that 75% of the organizations were unaware of this legislation, that it had passed, or the program that it had created. Some of them were misinformed and found out through some news articles, but many, many were unaware. As far as overall opinions go, generally, about 50% of the respondents had a positive opinion of this program. They cited a couple of components to that opinion, that it is a game-changing project if you're ready for it, that it is a good way to fund large organizations and the backlog of preservation projects for historic structures. They saw it as potentially a more transparent process than the prior earmarks or the budget enhancement grants. But there was one caveat to the overall positivity in that many organizations hope that they can participate in this program but are uncertain if their specific situation is included. And just as an example of that, 50% of the people who responded positively to this program hope that this fund can help them acquire a permanent space. To reiterate and look at that number a different way, a full quarter of respondents think positively on this legislation and also think that it'll help them purchase a space, which might not necessarily be true. About a quarter of respondents responded very negatively. They thought, some of their feedback rather, was that they think it it privileges the already well-endowed organizations with another opportunity. It can treat property owners differently from those aspiring to purchase property. It is a potential for funding vanity projects with a limited impact on community need, and it is potentially irrelevant to organizations far away from eligibility or who reside in communities that are otherwise shut out of these possibilities. The remaining folks were neutral or understanding. These were about 20% of respondents who understand, regardless of whether their organization may or may not be eligible for this fund, they can understand that large organizations have greater expenses and separate needs. One respondent said it was utterly irrelevant to their work, which I thought was interesting. From this feedback, we can make a couple of assumptions about who might apply. And that is, that list includes large organizations that are already pursuing major projects, historic homes and other humanities entities that are pursuing preservation and restoration, mid-sized organizations that might be pursuing a single dream project, and small and mid-sized organizations that are hopeful for building purchase eligibility. I want to introduce this chart on this sheet here. What we discerned is that there are five essential bullets within the legislation that reward, that regard award amounts and applicant eligibility. I'll approach each one of them in the legislation and then move across the page on each line. In that first column, it is just the past legislation, language that's included in there, or rather a paraphrase of it. General counsel would disagree. In the second column, we'll present the approach that the Grant Committee is suggesting on how to apply that rule in an ultimate application guideline. And then in the third column, based on this initial community feedback, we would like to present some suggested changes to the legislation. So with that, the first line, the minimum award, and this isn't the legislation, the minimum award for a large capital project grant for facility improvement will be $900,000. The response from the community on this was both positive and negative, depending on whether an organization anticipates having an eligible project. Several organizations struggled with that funding threshold, which reflects a dollar amount far beyond what they're considered eligible projects could entertain. One organization specifically cited that an ultimate project for them would have to include all of their long-range projects, including HVAC overhaul, installation of a lighting grid, and exterior masonry repointing, without a guarantee that the $900,000 threshold would even be met by all of those components. To pursue all those projects simultaneously would require closing their space for a year. A different organization cited that, and this is a quote, equity-wise, it is challenging for a small organization to meet that sum. There are so many projects between $500,000 and $900,000. And then a third quote, to spend a single year, to spend in a single year would practically require closing the space for a year. We have declined large award opportunities in the past because of this constraint. This opinion was echoed among several larger organizations as well. That was the initial feedback. In the second column, the Commissioner's Suggested Rule, we would recommend setting a maximum large capital project award cap at $1.5 million. And why that is, is that so frequently, one of the first questions that we would get or that I would get from those organizations is whether there is an award cap, and truthfully, it is not written in the legislation. But with nearly universal feedback, award caps were either encouraged or understood from the community, including from several larger-sized organizations. A direct quote from one of them, there is something to be said for knowing that there is a cap. Otherwise, a project could be literally anything. We wouldn't know which project to apply for. Another organization said that there is another grant that has a floor but no cap, and it is really challenging to navigate. And also, we experienced this ourselves a few years ago with our own facilities and buildings grant program, back when that did not have a cap. We received requests at that time that, if fully funded, would have exhausted the budget in a single grant. In this dynamic, even sizable awards were disappointing to the grantee. After imposing award caps later on, grantees appreciated transparency which enabled them to set expectations on their proposal. And so we are recommending imposing a $1.5 million cap, which would make this award still the largest competitive grant to be issued from this agency and enable several grantees each year under this program. Based on the community feedback in the third column, we would also recommend adjusting the legislative language to adjust that minimum threshold to award amounts of $500,000. As indicated in the sheet, many organizations will never encounter a single $900,000 project. Even large organizations see a greater frequency of important and impactful projects between $500,000 and $900,000. And then secondly, this reduction in the award floor closes the gap between this program, large capital gap projects, and our historic capital projects grant known as facilities and buildings. On the second item in the past legislation, one of the requirements is that applicants must either own the facility to be improved or possess at least a 30-year lease on the facility to be improved. And this received some of the most robust negative feedback. One grantee ironically stated, quote, "Because a 30-year lease is a very normal thing." Another grantee stated, quote, "30 years is..." She was unable to complete the sentence. Many organizations were incredulous and called this criteria exclusionary, far beyond the traditional lease terms, which is supported by the commission's knowledge of leases from three years of running the rental and mortgage relief program, where we were exposed to over 130 lease and occupancy terms. And so we are making the suggestion that the 30-year lease criteria include lease history as well as extensions. That would widen the inclusion to acknowledge the stability of longtime-rooted organizations with a 20-year history in a space and 10 years remaining on their lease. We would also suggest the rule that a 30-year lease criteria be inclusive of other legally bound terms of occupation or possession. This can include residence by congressional mandate, federal or district government agreement, or similar. Three years of our rental and mortgage relief program has increased our overall awareness to the non-traditional occupancy of many very stable organizations in the city, which would benefit from access to these funds. Without this, otherwise, these organizations, through no fault of their own, may never be able to purchase their property and would also never be able to take advantage of this opportunity. And as far as the suggested legislative revision goes, we would propose that applicants intending to own their facility, we would propose that applicants intending to own their facility upon the project's completion should also be eligible. And this is based solidly on the feedback from the community. 60% of surveyed groups directly inquired about the eligibility of this kind of purchase project. As a quote from one of them, "So much of arts in this city is month-to-month, and artistic financial performance fluctuates radically. Ownership helps stabilize the sector." Another direct quote, "The grant really should assist in ownership because it's a critical issue. Those of us who are bold enough and brave enough to go for ownership need a little help to do so." As cited by several organizations, this comprises the largest capital campaign that many organizations will ever undertake. And as one organization said, "If there is a $500,000 cap to acquire property as there currently is with our current program, we're essentially legislating an asset class." Another supported legislative revision, we would propose that applicants intending to own their facility... Oh, sorry, hang on just one second. So we would recommend that the lease term requirement be reduced to 15 years instead of the 30 years. And that is based, as it says on the sheet, on community feedback, that a 30-year lease does not exist in most traditional landlord arrangements. We would also make the further suggestion, based on community feedback, that the lease criteria should additionally permit an intent to lease contingent upon the receipt of award funds. And our community feedback indicates that this change can encourage... And our community feedback indicates that this change can encourage landlord negotiations which would further increase organizational stability. Moving on to the third criteria, approved projects will improve a facility with a tax valuation of at least one million dollars. And that is written into legislation. Feedback on this point was one of confusion, with some uncertain about how to achieve a tax assessment on property that is owned by a nonprofit. Others cited that property values are largely driven by the neighborhood over which the resident organization has limited control. And by extension to that point, several survey respondents, particularly those in words seven and eight, saw this as a barrier to ever apply for this grant since their property would not meet the tax valuation threshold for the foreseeable future. So with that said, we would make a suggestion for the rule application in that second column, that a facility purchase qualifies as an eligible facility improvement. Under the current understanding of this legislation without adjustment, an organization therefore in possession of a thirty year lease of a sufficiently valued property would be eligible to purchase the property under this grant. As one community member stated, ownership itself is an improvement on the property since it is an improvement on the property's potential. This also further acknowledges the desire for so many organizations to achieve that stability which only ownership can provide. And then the third column, based on community feedback, we would additionally suggest that the legislation adjustment, that the legislative legislation adjusts the tax valuation threshold, reduce it by half to five hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is in response to those organizations that are hopeful to pursue eligible projects in underappreciated neighborhoods. Due to circumstances beyond their control, they would otherwise be ineligible for this opportunity. Points four and five receive largely positive feedback as they appear to be measures of equity, or at least that's how they were interpreted from the community. And as such, there are no suggestions. But to clarify, these criteria are that in the same fiscal year, a grantee cannot receive a grant from both the capital project programs that C A H operates. And then also grantees cannot apply for another large capital project grant for the following two fiscal years. So the most frequently owned organization could achieve one would be every third year. On item number six, we wanted to include something outside of the legislation, which is as per usual, we establish our granting guidelines and our panelist scoring criteria to address the following. An applicant provides measurable, a measurable plan committed to inclusion, diversity, equity, and access for constituents, staff, board, and their broader communities. The project increases access for D C residents according to geography, race, and ethnicity, ability, discipline, and other categories. The project increases arts and humanities residential and or studio space. There was a great quote from one of, one of the participants in this, in this exchange that says, in a quote, my one concern is whether it'll go to people who need it. If it falls into the right hands, this could be a very good thing, or it could go very poorly. As I mentioned before, there have been thirty two conversations to date, and there are many more already scheduled for the coming weeks. I've shared the known details of this program in our public workshops and our virtual office hours. And if anybody hears this and hopes to participate in the conversation, I would love to speak with you. I'm grateful for the frank candor of each one of these people. They have demonstrated incredible transparency for the struggles that their organizations are undergoing, as well as how they hope to continue to engage with their evolving communities. They've been similarly honest in their aspirations. But more than that, each person that I've spoken to is aware that somebody will receive these grants. And many are hopeful for their own organizations, but they also know that other organizations will receive them too. And with that said, I heard expressions of hopes that these eventual grantees will avoid vanity projects and spend money on projects that the city needs. One grantee referenced the power of putting such large awards into good hands and the hope that that will bring people together instead of striking further divides. So I am grateful for everyone who's participated in this as community members, as well as on their work on behalf of the District of Columbia. And that is all.
Work, and it's been work that's been created, changed, added to over a week or so. So the grant team, Kevin and Terrell, have put a phenomenal amount of time and effort, and it's truly appreciated.
So since we are going to vote on this in a subsequent meeting, we certainly can have discussion now, certainly points of clarification we should discuss now. If you want to really make a statement, because I know people are chomping at the bit on this topic, you can. But I don't want to have a prolonged discussion today. I think we should hold that for later. But I'm not going to bridle anyone. So Hector, you can start.
We lay the consideration for language access. If this particular program is available in two languages because arts organizations exist in different communities that perhaps may not have the facility with the English language. Please.
Excellent. Thank you.
Question? That's for the new people, I know this must be really interesting. But again, we will have so time and you can spend time with us to get perspectives if you wish. And Carla, are you with us?
I am here.
Good. Is Natalie there too?
Hi Reggie, I'm here.
Good. Just want to make sure that if there are any clarifications that you need on this topic before we go on. But again, we will have a fulsome conversation the next time in the special meeting. We good otherwise?
Yeah, I said everything last, last meeting and to the press. And so I'm not going to keep repeating myself. I think we should go, I appreciate the efforts to mitigate, which is a completely unacceptable situation. So thank you for all the work that's happened.
Good. And Carla, I guess you're okay as well?
Yes.
Good. So why don't we go to the next topic? David Martinez, I hope you're here to talk about an update on the foundation we're trying to create. And especially for our new commissioners, perhaps you could introduce the topic so that they understand where this is coming from.
Sure. Hello, everyone. I'm appearing via WebEx remotely. I'm wearing a blue jacket, dark hair. So the, the foundation has been something that the commission has been focused on for quite a bit now. I was, I came on board in March. It was already a thought that was percolating throughout the commission, something that was sort of the, the brainchild of, of the commission and wanting to further and establish this, this organization. And so the foundation would serve as a, well, that's exactly the question today and the question I've had, talked to Reggie. What exactly is this foundation going to serve? It would be separate apart from the commission and it would do and accomplish things that the commission itself would, is unable or doesn't have the, is limited in the, the ability of, of the commission itself. So some of the things that we had talked about with Reggie, and I actually spoke to Reggie recently about this, were to introduce the foundation as a fiduciary agent that could help support and sponsor organizations that are unable to achieve that. For serving as a, as a mentorship or a, a foundation that could educate and lead artists and help artists grow within the community. And what we've, what we're trying to establish now is not only the legal framework and how this foundation would exist, but I think as what the commission, the agency is trying to accomplish now is to identify the specific needs of the community and to see what needs exist in the community and how this foundation, it would again be separate apart from the commission, could meet those needs. And working with Reggie and speaking with Aaron and the rest of the team at the agency, what we're trying to do now is not only have we identified the manner in which this foundation could be created, but we want to figure out what exactly the foundation needs to do so it could best suit the community. So what we're planning to do now is reach out to community members directly to see and to gauge what exactly their, the, the community members are missing, what components and elements do they feel like they haven't received their correct support, the, the, the sort of guidance that they need. And we want to hear more from the commission directly on what this foundation could achieve. So if we think about things the commission is currently funding, well, what are other elements that the community can receive from the commission that isn't already being provided by the commission? So I think there needs, there, there, the team has identified there needs to be a bit more outreach to determine what exactly are those needs and a bit more communication and coordination with the commission to identify what exactly this foundation will accomplish. And I'm going to be working directly with, with Aaron and the rest of the team at the agency to not only, again, not only determine the legal, legal framework in which this foundation would exist, but also the mission and the objectives that this foundation would accomplish. So that, that's a brief overview of what we're doing. And we're going to be trying to dedicate a bit more time and energy into this so that it's not something that is just a side project, but it's something that is on the forefront of our minds so that we can fully flesh out how exactly we're going to implement this grand project.
And not to get ahead of our agenda, but the next topic, Carla Sims and Terrell are going to talk about this Art Week D C concept that we're working through, which is in shorthand, bringing art Basel to D C. I say that now because in my mind, the two things that this foundation could do is first, it could be that fiscal sponsor for small organizations, artists that can't do a five one C three and therefore can't get charitable contributions. But they could through this foundation as its fiscal sponsor. And this foundation could raise money far in excess of what this commission could ever raise for the benefit of this Art Basel D C that we're trying to formulate. The reason I say that is it's important if we are targeting, and Carla and Terrell will talk about this, the instantiation of this Art Basel D C in 2025. The foundation needs to be in place before that to raise the money. And so while we're okay in 2023, the hope is we can get the foundation in place by 2024 so that it has a year to raise money for this thing in 2025. So I appreciate where we are in the process, but I need a sense of urgency around, if we are going to do it, we need to get it done so that it can start fundraising ideally within a year from now. And so you tell me, David, whether in your crystal ball, it feels like now that is possible or should we try to readjust our expectations? Or I just want to figure out the timelines for things that lead to the others.
Or, you know, and I want to be, you know, completely transparent with the commission. You know, as I, I only recently came on board and I, I pride myself in my desire and passion to accomplish projects and large projects, right? That, that's something that I've, I've enjoyed doing throughout my career. However, I want to be very clear on what exactly the, the, the goalposts are, right? What, what, what is the structure? What is the framework of this foundation? And I feel like that, you know, that, that truly hasn't been flushed out. There are certain, you know, you've mentioned Art Week, that's something that the foundation might be able to help further along. But I don't, I, I'm, what I'm cautious about is there are things that the commission can accomplish. There's actually many things that the commission can do that isn't currently being done. Just because the commission's, you know, the agency was quite small and has only recently increased its capacity. So I want to really sort of understand the full capacity of this commission. Because once a foundation is created, and that needs to be crystal, we have to be crystal clear about this. Once that foundation is created, there cannot be any interaction between the commission and the foundation, right? Well, there can be interaction, but there can't be, can't be significant input or resources put into the foundation. Because again, while the commission is independent, it must operate within the framework that it has been, that it has been created in. So the, I, I truly am concerned with creating a separate entity and then allowing that entity sort of do its own thing and with, with the hope that it will accomplish what it needs to accomplish. And so I really want to nail down what is it that the commission can do that we need the foundation to do? And if there are things that the commission can do that the foundation, that we're asking the foundation do, then well, do we need that foundation? And so that's why I think it's very important. That's why Aaron has identified and the rest of the team has identified. Let's figure out what exactly we're attempting to accomplish. We talk about Art Week. You know, we just, we're hiring two new events individuals who have, you know, tremendous amount of experience on putting, putting together large scale organizations, large scale events. So we're, we're really ramping up our capacity to, to, to do things that we may not have been able to do before. So let's use that tool because we have full control over it. Before, you know, saying, well, let's pass this on to something else, an organization, another board, another staff that we will not have a significant control or autonomy over. So again,
I understand that, not to interrupt, but I think we're having two conversations. I want us to do it the right way, but I want by 2025 for there to be a way for us to raise money for Art All Week if we decide. If the commission can raise those tens of millions of dollars, that's fine. If the foundation needs to do it, it needs to be in place by then. So mine is a timeline question. It's not really a question of clarity of rules. We need to clarify the rules. They need to govern it's right, et cetera. But I'm just trying to figure out, will we have some entity capable of fundraising for Art All Week in 2025 if we decide to do it in 2025? And perhaps you don't want the answer now because you may need to go through the things. But I, I'm not, I'd love for it to all be done by the commission if possible. I was told that was not possible, so I started this foundation idea. But if we discover the commission can do it, fine, as long as we can raise the money in time for 2025.
Sure. And yeah, I hear you, Reggie. I think, I think that, right, there are two separate questions here. The legal question of how can, how quickly can we create that foundation? What are the steps that we need to create it? And I think we've done a pretty good job through, through Jeff and company to identify those things that we need to sort of create this thing. And, and Jeff has been, I think, very transparent in the timeline. Okay, you know, next session, we can propose a bill and send a bill to, to the council. They can, they can, you know, pass what they need to pass to create this organization. We can create our, you know, register the, the nonprofit. We could sort of do those things. But the question is, what exactly are we trying to accomplish? And I think though, that what are we trying to accomplish and what can we do now? I think it's really important we nail down before we sort of continue. And I understand that the commission wants to focus on this, the Art, Art Week in 2025. But I think there just needs to be a bit more work, a bit more understanding of what we're trying to accomplish before we, we can nail down specific dates. I don't, I'm not sure if that, that answers your question or helps in any capacity, but I do want to be.
I hear, I hear your concerns. My request is, as soon as we can sort it out and then answer the question of, will we have enough time? Whether it's with the commission or a foundation to raise the money we need. Because if we need to, say, Art All Week needs to happen 2026, the sooner we know that, the sooner we can plan around it. So that's, that's my real question. Is if we create this thing, but we can't fund it, we haven't done anything. So I just want to manage our expectations.
Exactly, exactly.
This is a bilateral conversation. The others question, Reggie.
Some years ago, we looked at trying to raise money to do a lot of things that we weren't able to do with the funding we had. Granted, our funding has increased. However, what we found is that it was very difficult to ask people for large sums of money because the money had to be given to D C government, to a general fund or to a specific fund, but to D C government. And people were unwilling to commit large amounts of money. They wanted a nonprofit that did not have all of the legislation, right, exactly, that, that meant and designed how the money would be spent. So that was primarily one of the reasons that we thought this was the right idea.
But I'm happy, we need to do it the right way. So I'm happy to go through it. I just want to make sure that whatever we decide, we can put it in place in time to fund this festival. Just please.
What I'm hearing in him, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the man's name that's speaking, David, is like, what is the foundation? Because it sounds like we're talking about a foundation that's going to help with people who tried to get money from the commission or the D C arts community. But then at the same time, you're talking about a foundation that's going to primarily fund this Art Basel thing. Those are two different things. So like, where's the draft mission statement for the, you know, like, where's the language that's been written? Like, is that, you know what I'm saying?
Foundation could do both. I mean, many foundations, right?
Can really do both. Yes, absolutely.
My proposition always was to do both. His question is, let's not create something that we already can do with the commission. His question is, let's not create something that we already can do with the commission. That's his concern.
Right.
And what Gretchen is saying is we've gone down the, if we were talking about thousand or five thousand, even $10,000 maybe, but what it's going to take to fund an Art Basel equivalent in DC is more than I think this commission can raise. Because as Gretchen said, people don't want to give tens of millions of dollars to something that goes into the government. And then the government can decide to give the money and not give the money for this purpose. So we have to sort it all out. I'm just hoping we can get the timelines to work.
But is there a mission statement?
But that's, that's what he wants. He's going to write the mission statement, of course. He just wants to make sure he's writing the right thing. And this is, this is fair. I mean, these are, this is a complicated issue. And the answer may be we can't do it. But when I see a need, I'm trying to figure out a solution. And it's clear that there are many small organizations and some artists that deserve funding that perhaps we can't give them, that people want to write them a check. But if I can't get the tax deduction for it, I'm not going to write it. So if we can be that fiscal sponsor for them and that we do all that paperwork and because we all know artists who are great artists, but when it comes to the paperwork, they just can't do it right. So we would build that capacity and basically be given the money in the form of them being able to raise money if they couldn't before. So that's one thing. And then when the art, using the All Week idea came up, the notion of how to fund it. Again, we can't fund it. And it should be separate. So, so you've gotten a lot of info, David. Oh, please.
One other thing I wanted to add to Reggie, if I may. Hi. So the, the question was also about like getting input from the arts community about what the needs are. And there's so much, I mean, especially we talked about the Equity Task Force. I mean, thousands of survey response. I mean, we have really clear, we've gotten a lot of feedback over the last several years from what the community wants. Government works slow. And this foundation gives us a possibility to be able to move, be a little bit more flexible, a little bit more nimble of the ability to do things that you just simply cannot do under the current structure. And, you know, we've, we've had these, Jeff has presented on this foundation like for at least the last six, seven meetings. You know, so we've been talking about this for a long time. And David, I know you're just kind of just getting up to speed on everything. But I think with those two goals, that's a lot, really, even to have to a good start. In addition, the DC Public Library, and this is what I bring up every time, they do, they have a foundation for that reason. They're able to raise money for exhibits and to do things that, that's outside the constraints of the office of the, you know, outside the constraints of government, which I understand why they're there. It still can be, it still can inhibit creativity, finding creative solutions to some of the challenges that we're facing. So it's just another, you know, something else in the toolbox to be able to sort of move forward. So DC, DC Public Library also, I believe that DC Public Schools also has a foundation, right? So they're, where they're able to raise money and, you know, use the, you know, use the government agency. And, you know, as a partner in being able to do other things that government can't do.
And, you know, if I might just add one last thing, I, I think there's a few things that I see here, right? You know, we have a lot of different ideas of what we want to accomplish with this foundation. And we have, you know, a little bit of simmering frustration that, that this hasn't been moved along as quickly as, as we, as, as we would like it to have moved. I, 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 I'm not a member of this commission and the only thing I can do is suggest and advise. I, I really think there, there's a need here for us to sort of perhaps create, you know, if we, if a committee of sorts can sort of attempt to get all our, all the input that we need in one place. I don't want to take up too much time of this commission meeting, but I, I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of knowledge here and there's a lot of desire to accomplish this. But there's, the, the agency itself may not be the best place to start. And I, I know that might sound like a, a cop out. But when we're talking about foundation, we're talking about a non-government agency. And we're talking about the fears of, of people maybe funding something that is a government agency. Now we're creating a separate foundation with, that's part of the CH, but not correct exactly that. Again, there might be other ways of accomplishing what we want to accomplish using, you know, other partnerships and other networks that we have available to us. And I just want to really explore all of those options. Because it's very easy to say, let's get CH to, to create this foundation, let's, let's fund it, let's get it running. But to find out the nuance in that and the sort of the tricky, you know, to really identify those, the tricky aspect of that, I think it really, we really need to sit down and think about it and talk about it in a, in a much more nuanced way. That maybe, you know, these larger commission meetings might not be the best, best suited. So perhaps we can ask a committee to, to, you know, dig down deep into identifying these things. You know, I, again, my, my own, my own goal here is just to get as much information as I can to, to speak intelligently on this. And I, I could see there's a lot of moving parts that might want to, we might want to sort of get it all in one room, if that makes sense.
Lee, you, you kind of teed up a question that I had, and that is threading the needle between private funding and public funding can't be, can't be unique to our city. So I, I kind of wonder, have, has the group looked at other cities as models yet? Are there other city foundations that, that have done this before? Or is this a first of its kind idea? I can't imagine it is. And, and if so, what are other people doing? How did they, what language do they use? How did they thread the needles that we're all trying to thread in this room?
Thanks, Jase. No, that's a really good.
Get that analysis. And to your point of simmering frustration, so as Natalie said, for many, many months, we've talked about this. For many, many months, we've looked at other places in DC where they've created foundations, other places in the United States where they've created foundations. And, and David, I must say, I'm, I'm confused over the confusion over what this wants to be. I've been very clear about the two things that I'd like to see the foundation do, two things. Become a fiscal sponsor for people that can't get money otherwise, that does not exist with the commission now. They can't get money unless they're, they're 501(c)(3). And a foundation that can raise a lot more money than what we can. So while many other people may have points of view, I've always talked about two things for this foundation to do. So I'll leave it back to you to sort it through in some meaningful way. Take the information that Jeff has pulled together already, see what's possible. And perhaps it's not possible, but I don't want to spend seven more months asking the same question again. And with that, I thank you. And we'll go to the next topic.
Thank you, Reggie.
Thank you. So Carla, would you and Terrell take us through an update on the Art Week DC update and perhaps give some intro as well for our new commissioners?
Good evening. Carla Sims, Terrell is, I think, in the room there. And we have been working, you know, for the, almost, or since February or January, we went to Art Basel in Miami to bring something similar to Washington DC. And so we, we had a listening session with some of our grantees and stakeholders a couple of months ago, and we have feedback from a brief survey that some of those attendees took, which Terrell will go over in a few minutes. And then we also have been thinking about ways to create this week of art, which we're, what we're calling a week of art in DC that would kind of parallel Art All Night. I mean, I'm sorry, Art Basel, but we would do it in conjunction with our, our current initiative, Art All Night. I think the, the opportunity to build out a program that expands what we're currently doing in communities and make it and, and to give it a national and even international flair will be good for the cultural economy here in Washington. And so that's what, that's really what we've been kind of focused on. Terrell, do you want to take a second or a few minutes to kind of go over some of the highlights from the stakeholder meeting we had? We felt it's important to make sure that we have buy-in from all of the various wards and, and grantees and other stakeholders that we would be relying on to, to help us pull this off over the next few years. And we, this, this event would actually launch in 2025. So we would take the next two years to start building and getting increasing engagements. The foundation is a, is a key part of this, as it would allow us to help the grantees create financial opportunities for the, for the grantees.
So we wanted to be thoughtful about both our pre and post surveys. So we wanted to get a baseline of what the community felt about art festivals in general and those kind of things. So with our, after the meetings, we had our discussions, we followed up with the post survey. Brief summary of some of the survey results. Overall, the meeting was a good opportunity for people to share their thoughts and ideas about expanding Art All Night to include a week of art. There's still a lot of work to be done, but the meeting was a good start. Based on information they have at this, at that stage at the time, some people were interested in supporting and learning more about it. So that was a very positive sign. Some valuable takeaways. We talked about the importance of transportation, the strain on host organizations, and if the expansion is best in September. The vibrancy of the DC arts community, the importance of engaging with local artists and communities. And some additional thoughts and observations that our guests had. There's a lot of discussion about the needs to support local artists. Some people were concerned about expanding Art All Night into a week of art would dilute the local qualities that make the event so successful. There was some discussion about the timing of the event and how it would impact other arts events in the city. So one of the things that we wanted to do, we want to keep the conversation going. So right now we have two events people that are coming on that will help facilitate additional meetings like this. Part of what myself and Carla will touch on a bit more is our Be A Part campaign. What that means is that we really want the community to be a part of what we do. We really want to welcome them in and be partners in this work. So it was, it was some really great feedback. More meetings are to come. Carla, should I kick off the Be A Part piece, the next pieces, or would you want to jump in on it?
Before you do that. If I could put our new commissioners on the spot, have you all heard of Art All Night? Because many of us, I've been in the States since 2007. I heard about it last year for the first time. And just about, evidently, but I'm saying, and just about everybody I quote unquote know when I ask the question have not heard of it. So we need to do something about that, certainly. But the, the whole concept of what we're trying to do here, we want, we don't want you to feel as though the train is out of the station. It isn't. We've had one meeting, we've gotten input, we want to get input from others. We want the commissioners on board or help us adjust it or kill it or whatever. So I want you to know that this is all just input to you, but you have lots of room to shave it or kill it, if it needs to be killed. So I just want to say that. Well, you know.
So I'll go ahead and talk about it. So one of the things that we wanted to do is we really want to start building brand recognition now. Even though we're talking 2025, it's important that people feel like they're a part of this while we're building it. One of the huge things about doing this scale of a festival is you have to have community buy-in. If you don't have that buy-in, if the community, uh-oh.
Sorry to keep interrupting you, but for those of us that went to Art Basel Miami last year in December, we met with the two senior people of Art Basel there. And they made it very clear that one thing they never did right was to engage the community officially. And so their real suggestion to us is that we do, we take this time and have these meetings, talk to the folks and evolve it over time. And so we're really trying to learn from them. As successful as Art Basel is, they said, that's where they had to do adjustments and fix it along the way. So we are putting a lot of energy into engagement and getting it right. Sorry.
And I think the other thing that they commented on is while they're not looking to create additional Art Basels around the country, they are interested in working with local communities like Washington DC to create and mentor us through the process. So we would have the support of, of Art Basel and their leadership and, and their lessons learned and best practices. Go ahead, Terrell.
Little bit more about the branding campaign. With Be A Part, we wanted to start bringing the community. And so we're going to start with a website, a splash page, where people can go and at least share their information. So join our email list, know when our stakeholders meetings are, those type of things. The main focus of that splash page is Be A Part. We want you to be a part and share your ideas the entire time. With the Be A Part, the, it's B, A, and then part, the art is capital, but the P is small. We want that A R T to represent whatever that, that community is. So we have different campaigns where people can submit and show how that A R T fits their organization. So that's one part that they can change and submit. We have some different ideas around doing some decals and just really making sure that the community knows that they are a part of the making of this the entire way from the start. So we haven't even named it officially. This is just to say, we need you to help us with this. And so I think that's the first part of it. Carla, did you want to add anything to that?
Something, yeah. I'm sorry. Unlike, unlike Art Basel, which is focused on visual art, our intention is that visual arts, performing arts, culinary arts, fashion. So also art is the broader definition of art that versus what you may see in other things. There, there are things around Art Basel that are those things, but Art Basel itself is really just visual arts. And maybe some performing visual arts, but, but not full performance, certainly not culinary or fashion or anything. So just wanted to add that. Components that, that really is important is that we, we need to recognize that right now, if, for example, the mayor's office per se, Mayor Basel pretends is so very much for this particular program to kind of really over spend, if you wish, to fund it this year. This project can also be brought forth to the city because the city completely pulls in. They can put in resources that we will need to enhance the program if we bring to, to, you know, to that. The expense of this particular program, I don't think we would have to worry about the funding issue because it's an economic catalyst that will be far beyond our greatest dream with Art All Night. It would create, gain international attention. So since we already are in that mood, that the mayor is endorsing this, might as well play that and work with the mayor to bring that to fruition because, and then we're the agency that would work with it to carry the ball. So it would be outside of the mayor's purview, like it would be right now. So I think it has the acceptance of the city as an economic catalyst. Might as well take it full run and say, hey, we're expanding this idea. We won't have to reinvent the wheel. And I love the concept, of course, that it's incorporating other arts. And that in itself is yet another catalyst, or if you say, incentive for the acceptance and the wanting to participate in other industry, I mean, industry organizations, such as the Restaurant Association, hospitality organization, bringing in all these components to make this really, and these events, you see, I mean, it could really explode. We have all the ingredients here. It's just a matter to be a lot more focused on expanding it and not dare taking it out. And some of us are old enough to remember Miami before Art Basel and see what, what economic boost has been to the city. So let's not underestimate, I think the mayor's office appreciates that. We've got to do it the right way and work it through. And that's why we want to take the two years to, to work it through. And it may have to be in three years, whatever it is. But yeah, I think you're right. You're exactly right. Turn attention.
So this year, we're looking to do a couple of initiatives just to bring focus to it and the work that we're doing. So one of the things that we've come up with just some ideas at this point, we're brainstorming. One of the things that we want to do is we want to work with a local DC artist that we contract. And we actually, he has a company where he produces prints for artists who don't have the resources or the funds to do it. So instead of giving them money, So instead of giving them money to, or support in that way, he supports them by giving them prints so that they can sell their artwork. So when they get to the very last one, they only have one piece that they can sell, he provides them with 100 or more. So we're going to work with this artist to, and again, this is an idea. So if there's feedback or that kind of thing, but we want to work with this artist so that we can possibly provide 20 artists this opportunity, where they wouldn't have to buy their prints. So that can feed our artists who is emerging, who is, just doesn't have the resources to do kind of that large scale and that kind of thing. And that can, 100 prints can go a long way in festivals and different things that we have in the city. And hopefully, they, they can be up and running with Art All Night. So we're, we're really trying to be intentional about coming up with plans that incorporates our community partners, sees everyone, because we're truly going to have to see everyone in, in these communities for this to work. And just really support our local artists. These are the small first steps that we're going to keep it going. So. And that's it for me, Carla. If you have anything else?
I think the main thing is we want to make sure that we create a shared vision and a strategy for the week of art in DC. And that's why we, the stakeholder meetings are so important. And we do have plans for some additional ones.
Since comments? So I think we are at new business, and I actually do have some new business. I'd like to introduce an item of new business, a resolution to expand and extend the agency's strategic plan. The period of performance of CH's strategic plan runs until the end of FY23. And there are a number of recommendations from the plan incorporated from the task force, equity inclusion and belonging, which are still relevant, as well as the recommendations from the recent COVID-19 impact study. This is an, an on-year for CH regarding our grant application to the NEA, which requires, among other things, that the agency submit its strategic plan as part of the application. The resolution I'm introducing would incorporate the recommendations from the COVID-19 impact study into the strategic plan and extend the strategic plan through the end of FY24. So it says, I should read the text of the resolution. Okay. Where is it? On the second page in this? Okay. So I will give everybody a chance to read it yourself, instead of me reading it through. It's really quite simple, but please just take a minute to, to read the resolution. And it's on the screen for the public. So if I may, is there any discussion? So I'll take a roll call to approve the resolution. If you're in agreement, a, otherwise nay. Cor. Julian. Cecily. Natalie.
Yay.
Chase. Kimber. Carla.
Hey.
Hector. Gretchen. It passes. Is there any further new business? There being no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held Monday. It's not Monday, July 24th, Monday, August something, August 21st, 2023 at 5:30 PM. The time is now 7:10 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.